Did you get Brandon?
Alright, committee's over.
Okay.
Uh, Trevor Bundy here, Brandon Bunger here, Charles Foster here, Heather Epps here, Phil Holsher here, Julie Lyon here, Matt Watnick here, and Michaela and Jared Peterson are both present. Um, Monty, Lily, you go first real quick, we hear you.
The calls, we have four AMS calls, one fire call, uh, one fire training, and we had four PR. And some three week work details, but with the country days, it was another successful year. To thank the city council and everyone that's involved with that, it's, it was a great weekend, unfortunately I had to work, but reports I'm getting. Um, we had a great day on Saturday, and I've heard nothing but good feedbacks with fireworks and everything that went on in the park, so.
Good.
It's a good community event, so that's pretty much our report this month.
Sounds good. Alright, anybody have any questions for us? Okay, so move on to public time. Heather Bundy is going to present Colton with the Colton Pool Committee about turning the funds over to the city.
Um, yeah, uh, so I have the bank statement, um, we have thirty thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-three cents in the bank at US Bank, um, in Hartford, they are closing the bank in Hartford, um, I think it's October ninth. So, um, I would like to be able to cut the check and give it back to the city as I no longer, um, want to have my hands in this anymore. Um, it's a huge task by myself, I mean, I get people to help me when I have the time to put in a fundraiser, but leading up to that, it takes a lot of time, energy, my family, my really close friends are the only ones that step up. Um, and then if I'm not doing anything, I get slammed in social media. Where are the funds? She's taken the funds, so I'm kind of just at my wit's end with it. Um, I don't want to see that pool fail, I don't want it to see it ever close, I never did this for a personal gain, I never did this for my children, I did it for the community, um, but I just, I can't take the, the beating that I get for doing good in this town anymore, so, um, I don't know what you guys want to do with the funds, I can cut the check, close the account, and it will be back in your guys' hands. Um, I do have a printout of, you know, like what we had decided that was best for the pool of the two point one, but that was two thousand and eighteen, you guys know it's gonna cost more, or if there's a different avenue that someone else can do with the pool that Burbak Aquatics couldn't do, I don't know, because I don't have the funds to go back to the drawing board, I feel like you need to have half or more to go back to the drawing board, but that's kind of where I'm at, so I'm sorry I failed, but I couldn't do it alone.
No, you didn't fail at all.
But I don't think I should have to take a beating for what vehicle I drive and where those funds come from, I've never taken a diamond out of here, I actually put more money of my own personal money into this, and it's a big slap in the face, so I just want to give it back to you.
No, no, we definitely appreciate, appreciate you heading that up, and it, it was a big task.
Yeah.
Huge task.
I mean, we started out with six, well, actually, the first meeting we ever had in two thousand and seventeen, there was thirty-seven people there for it, and then the next meeting, it was down to twenty, the next meeting, we were down to six people, and I'm the only one standing for the last five years. So, so like I said, it's got thirty thousand nine hundred twenty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. Um, I have like the printout and stuff that shows like nothing's ever been deducted out of there since last August when I did a fundraiser, I bought some meat for that, I mean, to be able to put a fundraiser, you gotta take a little bit of the money, we recouped a lot than what was taken, so otherwise, there's been no other transactions besides deposits in there, so. You just have to let me know if you want me to write it to the city of Colton or what, you know, and then if people have any questions, they'll have to come to you guys, so I just want to wash my hands of it.
I think we'll discuss on what process we want to go with it, or who oversees it. I don't want it to go in the general fund of the city.
No.
So here is the bank statement showing what's in there, and then here is like our printout that we made a long time ago. Here's like the cost, you know, broke it down, like what would, how much the pool vessel would be, like to do the finishes, if you guys wanted to do a heater, you know, like, but all those numbers are going to be different, so.
Probably about doubles, you know, just looking at the market today.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know what other avenues there are out there nowadays for like pools, but I mean, that pool is so old, the only thing I ever heard if you do anything structural to it, you have to go ADA compliant, which is a huge thing, because that pool is not. You know, so I mean, if you do like concrete work, you do plumbing at work, you do anything to that, you have to go back to ground zero on it, so. And then I have, I have a bunch of notes for the last how many years, if you guys ever want them, I'm keeping them, um, or if you ever have any questions about anything, I'm happy to, but I don't want the money, so it's gotta go back to somebody else.
Oh, we'll probably discuss what happened, we're gonna put that in, thoughts is probably put in a CD.
Yeah.
So.
They're probably the easiest thing.
But we'll probably add that on the agenda for next month, then discuss what to do, so.
So you just let me know, and then I'll cut.
Do we have a, an actual direction of where are we gonna go? We'll have it next month, so, and then the meeting next month, you can just tell us, we'll let you know which avenue to cut that check to, so.
Before the Hartford event, just because it's an easy thing for me to go in there and close it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks again.
Heather.
We'll have you back up for Travis Bay baseball.
So our season has come to a close, um, our sixteen U team just played at State. Um, they took a fourth, but you know, it's a huge compliment that they even made it to State, our fourteen U also went to State. We had a twelve U, a ten U, and an eight U go to State as well, so we had great teams out there, um, Travis Bay baseball is really winning in a direction to show the competitiveness that we do have within our district, so that's really fun to see. Um, I talked to our board, they were very happy with the city of Colton, um, they wanted to say thank you for those lights, that was a huge game changer, being able to do double headers up there. Um, the concession stand, everybody just loved being able to have that right then and there, they said the staff was amazing, um, so we have no complaints at all. We did a little bit of work, well, I didn't, but we had Mike Grindy, um, did a little work in the batter's box on the big field, because that was really starting to sink in down there, and then, you know, we've just been really keeping an eye on that mound and covering it up and trying to take good care of that down there, so.
Which I think that's something that when you look at it, probably get the actual cover for that mound.
Yeah, we just got a new tarp up there, so that was helpful, and that other one had a lot of holes and stuff, but no complaints on our side, and if you guys have anything that you heard about any of our teams or people, but I think it was a really good season up there. Played a lot of games played up there.
No, um, just because that other one that we have up there with the tarp, no bringing the weights out, there's those ones that have the weights, like weighted all the way around, so they can just drag it out and drop it and just be done. Along with that.
They make one for over the batter boxes too.
I make one for, yep, yep.
That way we keep the water out of like where the people kick all the dirt out.
I looked at a couple of them, I didn't really get a price. It's just coming down to more of a, if it's easier, it gets done, if you make it harder, it just doesn't get done, so.
Um, one thing that, um, a couple people had noted to me when I was down there, coaching and stuff like that, was just in the dugouts having, um, some sort of way to hold the bats, uh, otherwise they just end up everywhere, you go to a lot of other fields and I see them, they have little bat holders, some of them have even little cubbies and stuff, just something like that maybe to look into, I don't.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that I had looked at, like going to other fields, like even on that big field for the foul balls, like they had like a PVC pipe that went in and then it dropped down, so all those kids had to do was just put the ball in there and then it went to the home dugout. So there's a couple of notes that I have.
Yeah.
For them, but.
That, uh, bat hangers would be, be nice to have, otherwise they just end up getting kicked all over the place.
Yeah.
Because you're constantly yelling at kids to pick bad stuff.
Yeah, I will add that, we have a meeting next Sunday.
Which we have to go back to the lights, so I wa- I want to thank our sponsors for helping us, it wasn't necessarily the city on that, those sponsors doing that, but speaking of that too, then with that little bit of remaining money that we have left over this year, we do need to figure out what we want to do with that up at the park, so. I know Julie's been looking into, uh, pool liners, so we're gonna have a couple meetings.
Do we need more benches?
There's.
Like aluminum ones?
No.
We could use a couple picnic tables in the park.
Yeah.
I just seen that on one of the state sales, they had like those aluminum three row benches, that's why I was curious.
Oh, we really.
Okay.
A lot of people bring their bag chairs and set up like that, I think.
I think the Owens were talking about doing another bag, another bag chair bleacher. They were talking about just doing a two tier over on the visitor's side, but I don't know if they'll cooperate with it or not, but that'd be cool. That gets used a lot.
Yeah, I think he fills it up right away.
Yep. Hey, guys, any other questions for Travis Bay baseball? Good job.
Are we still in public time?
Yep.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if the council is where I bring this up, there were two things that I want to bring up, um, up on Main, where they're doing the, I think that's that second street next to Dollar General.
Yep.
Um, I know they have to shut half the road down to sneak that sewer line out.
Yep.
The other day when I was up there at Dollar General, they, they put their utility trucks there too, as a convenience thing, I imagine, but I was trying to pull out of Dollar General and almost got hit, like you can't see when they're parked there.
Okay.
I get them doing what they need to do, but their trucks probably for visibility need to be addressed.
Yep.
Um, and then on my way out to the school board meeting, I took Park straight south.
Yep.
And at that corner where it merges with the other park road, I don't know what that one is called, the, the brush and trees and weeds are so high, I pulled out, well, I looked, and I'm in a suburban, so I have a better view, I looked and nobody was coming, and then as I pulled out, a car came through, and I believe there's a yield sign to that side? Is there a yield sign coming into that?
I don't think we have any sign coming out of that.
That's, that's still county, isn't it? Yes.
No, no.
It's our county.
That, that little road isn't the city's, that little section in between there and there, that's, that, that person that lives in that house, that's technically theirs.
I just think with kids heading out to school, even though they are gonna open up this road for the one-way traffic, the kids coming out there like, I'm an adult in a big car, and I couldn't see them, they couldn't see me, if we could just get somebody to scale those weeds back a bit.
We talked in our progress meeting, was that last Tuesday, Weston? About trying to not use Park, if there's any way that we could use, um, Minnesota. Because I just want to kind of keep the traffic down through that, that way, just while even on that too, you know, you can't see, so I don't know if there's a.
Well, you're gonna have, you're gonna have a problem there with people not using Park, because you've got.
It's real close all over.
Yeah.
I know, I'm, we gotta figure, try and see, I don't know.
You're gonna, you're gonna, it's, you're gonna struggle to get people to, to go down Minnesota just because of that.
And even if you tell them the kids aren't gonna listen.
No, I know.
I'm just talking real here.
That intersection, that intersection, because I came in from south, came through on Minnesota, and that, you know, that intersection's pretty tough, it's, it's really dipped down.
It's gotten depressed quite a bit, now, there's a lot of water that comes down, you know, Fifth Street, so if we build it up, then you're kind of blocking water back there. Retain the water on the east side.
So then, I can look at that intersection and see if we can just take a weed eater and act the weed.
Yeah, it's just that tippy, tippy corner that reduces the visibility, it's not like taking out the whole hill or anything.
We should be able to mitigate some of that problem there.
I don't know, if we, since we don't technically own that road or any other, we can put a sign.
I.
But, but a sign ain't gonna help if you can't see.
No, but I mean, if we get it cleaned up and put a stop sign, you know, coming, going all the way onto that road, that they have to stop.
Head south.
There is no.
We could maybe put like a portable one there or something.
Well, I stopped and I looked.
Yeah.
And the.
I'm just saying if we have one, you know, some, because there is nothing there, and someone just decides to, just to shoot out, and there's, like, I don't know, you know what I'm saying?
But I, I can definitely take a weed eater up there.
Yeah, you know, like, like three feet is probably.
Yeah, create some brush out there.
I didn't know if you guys owned it, or I didn't know.
No, we don't.
Yeah, because, because that dirt portion is that guy that lives on the east side of that dirt road.
So he could technically block it?
He could.
I mean, the city would have to probably go and fight and say, you know, it's been over the years of time that it's been used, you know, but we want to do that, not really.
No, no, we don't want to take care of it as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, so Pete and I have been really kind of trying to have a good relationship with him, so. He doesn't shut it down because it'd make a mess for baseball.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
It'd make a mess for anything down there.
Yeah, it would, that's where he struggles, is like during baseball games, they park on his yard, and you know, because forever, if nobody lived in that house, so it didn't really matter, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now it's occupied, so it's just.
Yeah, no, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll look into that, so, yeah, anything else you got? Okay. Country days.
Uh, we had our wrap-up meeting last night, um, kind of over how the weekend went, we thought it went very, very well, very smooth, we didn't have too many issues. Couple of complaints about the horse poop from the parade, not much we can do with that, you know, when they register, when they register, we do say that needs to be cleaned up. Um, I don't think people are patient enough to let them get through the parade and maybe come back to clean it before they kind of hounded us about it. Um, otherwise, I don't think we had any issues besides that.
It's really smart.
You guys did amazingly sure.
Yeah, you guys did good this year.
They were awesome.
You too, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up.
Thank you very much.
We didn't have to do too much, everyone was just kind of out on the place.
That's the goal.
Is there any things that you guys think, uh, for next year, that?
Well, we kind of take a break for a couple months, and then we'll go back to the drawing board, but then we have a couple of things we might, but nothing concrete at the moment.
Sorry, hang on, is any of them?
I just need the donation request form.
Well, that's been awesome, thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys, you guys do a heck of a weekend, so. It's thankless. So, okay, anything else from us at all?
I don't think so.
Unless you guys have anything for us for the weekend.
Okay.
We're the same format, so if you guys are good with that, we're good with that, we'll go forward.
We are too. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move on.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Move on to you. Move on to Weston here, we'll do a pay request number one from Alliance for phase four and five waterways as our storm sewer.
Okay, I'll give a quick update on the project, and Jared, you can chime in as well, so again, I got an update from Spencer. We do have a RPR, we've got a resident engineer that's on site throughout the project. So the Alliance is the contractor, they started work, so they started removals on Second Street till I-30th. Since then, they've worked on the installation of sanitary sewer main on, on Second. They completed that sanitary sewer main towards the end of last week, and then over the weekend on Saturday, they installed a manhole at Charles and Second. Um, today, they tied in, connected that manhole, made the permanent connections to each of the lines that come into that manhole. Um, tomorrow, they'll work on the sanitary services, I think, Jerry, is there two or three of them that I?
Three for sure.
Count for sure, okay.
Three, one? Three or four?
Is there, okay, so they'll have, they'll have sanitary services tying tomorrow, and tomorrow night, um, you know, that is a primary line that takes all of the wastewater from the east side of, of Main, and so there's a lot of flow that goes through that line. If you gotta do some testing on the manhole, so they do a vacuum test, and because of that high flow, they're gonna do that tomorrow evening between ten and eleven o'clock. Um, try to catch a low-flow time, Trevor and I, and Jerry too, and Michaela have been trying to spread the word on, try to limit your water use tomorrow night between, um, ten and eleven o'clock, it shouldn't only be about fifteen, twenty minutes for them to go down, they have to plug off each one of the lines that come in the manhole, and then they put a apparatus on there that creates a vacuum, they're checking for leaks. Again, things can go wrong too, so it might take a little bit longer, um, but try to be conscious of that. If you would, and if you would spread the word to the public to, um, limit water use. Hoping that the test goes well, which, which it should, there's no indication that it won't, they'll start on the roadway work after tomorrow. So they'll start pouring out the roadway and building the base and, and preparing it for curb and gutter and new roadway surface. I, I believe everybody's been accommodated on Second Street, you know, fortunately, we have the alley north of Second, so those residents can gain access to that alleyway, um, there's been a temporary driveway put in for Dollar General. I did not drive by that if we had new meetings, or any.
He did fly me in, I don't know if it was before I left off Thursday.
You know, and I do, I do recall that there were some issues with trucks, um, being able to make a corner and get in there. I don't know if the council's heard of any issues on Second Street that need to be addressed.
No, the, the biggest one I heard was, like Kathleen said, with parking in the middle of the road, because I heard people at Daybreak also complaining that it was hard to see around, but if they're about done with the sanitary sewer, that should be a mute point now.
They should be done with the bypass, I don't foresee them having a bypass.
Uh, they brought the pump back today, I, I seen them hooked up, heading out of town when I came back.
And then on top that, we did talk to, um, the Dollar General, and the contractor knows that they, they're not supposed to be parking their equipment on Dollar General's parking lot, so that's already been discussed, and we'll make sure that we notify them too, parking on the edge of Main, that that creates a little bit of a sight distance issue for people pulling in and out of the Dollar General.
Yep.
So I guess that takes us to Fifth Street, so they have started some removals on Fifth Street. Mid-American Gas has been on site, they've got a gas main that they've been working on relocating on Iowa. Um, there's a couple other items that they have to verify as far as, verify that they're not in conflict with our proposed storm sewer. If all goes well on Second Street tomorrow, um, likely that the contractor's gonna move over Fifth Street, start installing storm sewer probably Wednesday into the later part of the week, and depending on their schedule, depending on the weather as well.
How many driveways do we have on Second? Just the one? Two, if you include Dollar General?
One house, and then the alley, and then the Dollar General. The alley is a driveway for, like, two driveways, there are two houses that feed off of that alley, but they're able to come around to the backside of the alley.
Yeah.
And the gal that has the driveway that's closed off, she's just been coming in and parking in the alley and kind of walking across the lawn.
So is that mailbox gonna be? You know, like, is it gonna be in the waders and that? Well, it should have, I don't know if staking's out there right now, I'll have to check with our. So we need to, that one's like all brick and concrete chest. Do we know?
Mowed together though, or is it looks?
He, well, Spencer said he tried to.
Go and like savage the stone, you know, around it, and said they're all glued together.
Where's that at?
On one oh seven, it'd be across from Dollar.
Dollar General?
Yeah.
So, I'm just wondering though, like, I don't know if we have an ordinance that they're supposed to have a solid.
I, I can tell you what, uh, the county and the state would say, it's not been crash tested, it's not approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can tell you what the county and the state would say.
Yeah.
I mean, there, there is specifications for mailboxes. Um, whether we hold them to it, I mean, you're not doing fifty-five down that road, or at least you shouldn't be.
I mean, my, my, my question is, is like Weston said, that road kind of almost does a little curve, and we want to straighten that back out, and I don't really want to put the road back in a curve because of the mailbox, you know what I mean?
Right.
The.
We'll move the mailbox.
Yeah.
One way or another.
Now it comes back to, do we put it back to the standard of what it was, or if we give it back to what our ordinance states the mailbox is supposed to be?
I guess I don't, I don't ever remember seeing.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Has she, has she ever been notified?
Yes, we've kind of, I've been in contact with her.
And what's your thoughts?
She doesn't want to lose it.
Kind of like.
Is there any way to lift, like if we cut the post, can we lift that thing off of there, like get a whole unit? Or is it like concrete to the post? It just looks like it's just brick, like the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's concreted to the post, I wonder if you're.
Oh, you're, you're saying that we can somehow make a bracket, cut it off, make a bracket to receive and.
Well, it's not real big, if it's, if it's not like, if it's separate from the post, you might be able to just pull the whole thing up, and then she can, I, I don't, I don't know, that's where it gets difficult, because is it our responsibility to put that back over the new post, or is that her responsibility? And how, how that, how the ordinance looks.
That's awesome, we gotta check on the ordinance, and if we have nothing on the ordinance, we have to put it back the way it was.
I don't remember anything, I don't remember seeing anything, but I. I wasn't looking either.
No, I wasn't, I'm not gonna, I gotta look at trees, so. Okay.
No, no, the reason why I was asking about driveways, how long is that road gonna be tore up before they come in to pave? Could, could we get it up to somewhat grade, and then give them a, just a temporary gravel access? A ramp up, up the curb to their driveway, that way they're not?
We, yeah, we could, we could, um, the more, and that, and that's, I think it's good to provide some access if, if necessary. I, I probably wouldn't, you know, promote trying to open that up for them to get access whenever they want, because there's gonna be construction vehicles running around. And if they need to get out, and there's a hole in front of their driveway then, at that time, um, they're gonna have vehicles stuck in the driveway. It, it might be easier to say, hey, we'll ramp, we'll ramp this in in case you need to use your garage. If there was, you know, implement weather, severe weather, hailstorm coming, they could maybe access their garage then, but not do it with the intent that they're gonna have access every now. Because there's gonna be curb and gutter that has to go in, well, they can't drive over that curb and gutter for, you know, four or five days. Same thing too, when they do the driveway approach, they can't drive over that for three, four, five days.
Yep. I was just thinking that, whether or not without the garage for another month, month and a half, you know, however long it takes for them to come in and.
And she, the gal in question, she has been driving across her yard and parking in her driveway still.
Okay.
Technically, if she needed to get into the garage, she's sitting ready for the door, I guess, with her car.
I've, I've, I've just been on the other end of it where, you know, it was a long time.
But better now than when there's snow.
Yeah. No, no, and they did Maine and First, that was tore up a long time. Yeah.
You're on the outside of the street.
Yes.
Uh, anybody else have any other questions for Weston?
Yeah, uh, on Fifth Street, I had a couple neighbors there asking me, I'm right at the corner, but I guess I'd like to know for myself too, but. So they've got, um, the question was, there's stakes that are, they stake out in people's yard, are those just grading stakes? Um, just so they can check their elevations, um.
That's at Fifth and Iowa.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So that staking was put in as that was the approximate property line.
Oh, okay.
So to give, so that was to give Mid-American a little bit of an idea.
Oh, sure.
Where they, where they can run their gas main, so they, they relocated their gas main from underneath the street in Iowa to the Boulevard.
Yes, yeah, no, yeah, they did a little bit in, in my property, but even like down, um, down Fifth Street towards the west, there's um, stakes and paint lines and stuff that go kind of up into people's yard, I think the one on mine sits fifteen feet. Is that just, just to check their?
I think that's the option for the storm sewer, so they were just staking the storm sewer.
Gotcha, because I know it's on the, on the south side of Fifth Street that they'll put it there, so, okay. There was, he was just curious, he's, because he's like, are they gonna tear into my yard that far, or are they putting something in? Or are they putting something in, burying something in? And I said, I don't think so. I think they're just, it's just their stakes so they can check their elevations and make sure they've got everything to grade.
Based off of slope and all that stuff. Yeah. And there, and there will be some grading back from that top of curb, grading back towards the yard.
Yeah, yeah.
On the south side.
On the south side, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
On the north side, there'll be minimal impact.
Okay.
There's some, there's some laterals that come over to the north side to put in inlets on the north side.
Yep.
But that's just gonna be pretty located specific to that area.
Okay, so on the south side, there might be into the, into the Boulevard area a little bit?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'll give them a heads up just so you, so anyone else?
Any else any questions? Okay, that being said, we get a motion to pay request number one from page four and five.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we can move on to, this is just Michaela and Tobias are working um starting to work on the budget here. So this is just.
Trevor, do we wanna cover?
Oh, sorry.
Engineering.
Oh, sorry, I forgot, I guess I flipped over you, Weston, sorry. Yes, we gotta do the engineering contract. Yeah, sorry, I skipped over it uh for, for Fourth Street roadway and.
So this is the agreement for the Fourth Street project, for the Main Street project. The way that we set this agreement out, that's called a short form agreement. We use the same standard agreement that we have been using with City Hall. So this agreement is for design, engineering and construction services. If you go to page three. So that's where it lists out the basis of payment, the same as we have before. We're just proposing we just do an hourly to a max contract. So Banner will just be paid by the hour for whatever services are rendered. And this below, I've got values for each one of the tasks, I guess, or or the type of services. So for the design, engineering and bidding, I've got seventy-five thousand dollars listed. Now there's an asterisk with that, so part of that design fee comes from the TAP grant, which is already in a, in a work order. So that work order, we need to address that yet. I think that's still sitting out there. That, that was prepared by the DOT, the DOT had then sent it to Banner. Banner had signed the work order and then that was sent to the city. And, you know, in previous discussions, that it just kind of sat there because of the unknown with moving forward with the Fourth Street project. So if you do choose to move forward with the Fourth Street project and enter into an engineering agreement, then we would need to all sign into that's um scope of work or the, that work order that the DOT has prepared as well. So design, engineering, and then a construction phase services, which would be, and, and which is required to have somebody on site throughout the entirety of construction. So it would generally be one, one individual on site throughout construction. Banner would provide the construction staking and then also a construction administration, which would be the transferring of the documents between the city, the state, DNR, and then also doing things like RFPs, field orders, changes in work. So that comes to a total limiting fee of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, I've also, I've also got additional services listed. That would be the F portion on, on sheet three. And that's for geotechnical services. So outside of our engineering contract, and this is how we've done in the past, we're gonna need to hire a geotechnical engineer to do soil borings. So we'd hire a geotechnical engineer to do soil borings. And from the past history on the projects that we've done in Colton, we'd use cement treatment on the subgrade. So cement treatment is, it's the cement powder that's amended into the soil. And that's to reinforce that subgrade section. So it's to help mitigate some of the settling, some of the instability that we've seen in, you know, that I think that Colton's seen in the past. And that was, you know, one thing that was identified to us back in two thousand eighteen when we did First Street and Main Street. The state, our other roads have been settling, blowing up. What can we do to, what can we do to address that?
Pretty standard practice, but it's, it's getting to be more and more common. I mean, I see it about every, every job site I go on, they do it.
So I've got just an estimate of eleven thousand dollars in there. If that's not like the approval of, of that contract with Banner, it's just, hey, on top of that, you're gonna have geotechnical services. Then I'm gonna go to page, uh the appendix um. Attachment one, so if you flip all the way through our, our figure, you'll see the, the board that was presented at the, at the town hall meeting. So that's what we're calling the scope of services. So scope, scope services includes everything in that figure. It's the roadway from building front to building front, the water improvements and the sewer improvements. And then I keep flipping, I have attached the scope of services. So I've listed out each task and each subtask that's gonna be completed as part of this scope of work. And then the, the last thing that I think we would be valuable to discuss here, the attachment three, scheduled services. The scheduled services at the top. And then it's got the um, a schedule and implementation or a design schedule or construction schedule. Now, we had, we had talked about trying to bid this project before the end of the year. Working, working this project backwards and trying to fit in the reviews that are necessary with the DOT, with the state, with the ANR. That's not likely gonna be feasible to try to complete this work by the end of the year. Now, the storm, there's, sorry, the sanitary sewer portion, that's on Fourth and on Sherman. So that does have to be bid before the end of the year to be eligible for the use of arpa funds. And that was part of the discussion that we, that someone got into during the um, during the town hall. Now, I've reached out to DNR and they had, they had actually given the suggestion to try to change order that sanitary sewer work in on our existing contract with Alliance. We've had some preliminary discuss, discussion with Alliance to just see if they were eligible to do the work. He said that it would be, but it'd be October before they could get to it. Now, that would, that would help us on two fronts. One, you don't have to bid that portion of order. You're able to, you know, use the arpa funds or you'd be eligible to use the arpa funds. And you wouldn't tie your Fourth Street job on, onto an accelerated schedule as far as trying to bid before the end of the year. Now, DNR hasn't given the final approval to move forward with trying to change order that work in to the project. And uh but it was, it was approached before on the lining job and they were accepting of it at that time. So I didn't, I'm not sure why they wouldn't be accepting of it this time. I wanna verify that with them. Jared, I don't know if I missed anything, you know, we've had a short discussion on this.
The, the only thing that we would be is if we do that, we wouldn't get the, the pavement put back in till next, next year. So that would be gravel through the winter.
Which ain't always a bad thing.
What would be gravel? The pavement, just where they tear it off?
Well, six foot, eight foot? Or half of the road?
No, it'll, it'll be twelve, fourteen foot.
Okay.
So, but it.
We could fill it back in level with gravel.
Yeah, it would be back up to grade, to the road.
The only, the only thing is if we have a bad winter and it turns sloppy and then we're just dragging that all through town. And like I told Justin, he said, probably just close it off and turn it to a one lane for the time being. I think it's a good to move forward because then we are, when we are working on the Fourth Street project, that road's open, not open, open, but there's, we're not completely tying all that up.
Well, the, the other thing about it is, is that we're not so crunched to get everything else done. And we've already got a really good competitive bid with Alliance, so we know what that is already. So if we bid this project out this, this fall and it comes back, you know, two percent higher than what we are now, we're gonna, you know, it is what it is, we're gonna pay the lowest bid, whatever that is. We already know what the bid price is for the, for the scope of work. Right now, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Weston, but they'll just use the same numbers that we've already got.
You know, they'll, they'll use the, you know, the same bid, the same bid prices and they, and they have to. So for the state to, to, for the state to be on, on board or in agreement with change ordering this into the project, we have to use the same bid prices.
On the bits from the other companies were quite a bit more.
They were.
Than two percent.
Correct. So the only downside is that I can see is that can we put up with a little bit of gravel for a few months over the winter? You know what I mean?
Until they start construction next May.
So they won't save it till next, till they pave the whole.
Correct. Yeah.
Uh just, just from the experience I've seen, letting a road sit over winter gravel and letting cars pack it, hasn't been a bad thing. I mean, all, all the roads I've seen, they seem to hold up better when they go through a free, free stall cycle and let traffic pound them. So I guess I'm not opposed to leaving it open. Yeah, the, the only thing I worried about is what that being a change order, if it was, if they're gonna be like, see, you know, see dollar signs and wanna jack their rate. That'd be the only thing I would have been worried about, but if they can't.
They, they can't. The only, the only thing that they could potentially do is they could, they could ask for an additional mobilization charge. And I don't know if they would need that or not, if they're, if they're still gonna have their equipment on site, you know, to finish the storm sewer and then can move over to this work, there's not gonna be an additional mobilization. No, we're gonna ask for the pricing, so we'll get to review that. If, if they're going to ask for a mobilization charge, it may be warranted. I'm not saying it's not to move on, make sure that they're compensated fairly. But if it's excessive, then we have the option to say no. We're not on board with that or don't agree with that pricing.
Actually, we at least asked and.
While they're here.
While they're here, see what they're thinking, what their plans are and.
Trevor said, when, when we, next year when we tear up all of Fourth Street, we still have the side street for access.
Correct.
The bar and, and the post office and.
Yeah.
You know, by, by splitting this project into two pieces, more or less, I think it's gonna be better.
So when they do this, they're, they're going from Fifth and Sherman, past the post office to the center of the road to tie in uh sanitary sewer, correct?
So just a half block, so like an alley here behind the, behind the store, Gil Brush's store. Tie into that manhole layer and go north a half a block and then go west.
Okay.
You can see it on your. You can see it on your diagram.
The green line's pretty light, but they, they will have to set a manhole at the Sherman and Fourth intersection. And then they'll go west parts of railroad tracks and they'll tie into an existing manhole that's.
So essentially, half a block of Sherman going north will be gone, all gravel. And then west to Charles, that'll all be gravel in front of the post office.
Just gonna be that fourteen.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's, you know, it's gonna be, there'll be some issues. We're gonna have some gravel, like you said, that kind of schools out, gets on the road and.
Yeah.
And some maintenance issues that we're gonna have to deal with, especially in the first, but.
Have to stay.
Did you come back and lay a move?
Yeah. Yeah. So, okay.
Goes there.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Weston or Pete from the project? Any questions about the contract? Or Weston?
If you guys do get um residents with questions or anything, if, if you guys wanna go ahead and forward them on, because um I have had a lot of residents call. And um I, I've, the uh project, one of the project managers, Josh Norton, he was just in this morning asking, you know, had, had anyone said anything or did anyone have any questions? And I didn't have any, but.
No, yeah, if you guys do, let Michael know, at least we can have a Rolodex and some order of, of a list, you know, documentation on, so.
Or we could, we could address it too.
Well, yeah, well, at least that's why we're not.
There's an issue like that, we can take care of that right away, so wait three weeks for a council meeting, that's way better.
I didn't know about the utility trucks either. Nobody had said anything about that.
Yeah, so I didn't either, I didn't know anything about the utility trucks, so.
Do you need anything from us then to proceed with?
Well, I need approval of the contract.
Oh, oh, yeah. But as far as for Alliance to stay in and.
I mean, if you feel comfortable, I'll.
Sherman?
I'll request, I'll request the pricing from them. You know, we can.
I think, I think we should, yeah, I think go ahead and do that. Um do we need to do a motion on that or? This more of a, a favor?
Yeah, just, just kinda wanted to make sure everybody was on board with that.
Take their ears on it a little bit.
Just.
I don't wanna come walking into a council meeting and say, hey, we got this on the table and we don't know anything about it.
And that, and that's just in case there's extra money from the sewer lining project that we could use, correct?
They're likely will, there's, there's, there's not, there's probably not enough money to do that entire school. So we'll have to, we'll have to supplement that with the money that's coming from the state, so not the arpa for the money that was for the Fourth Street project. That'll have to supplement the work, cause that's gonna pay for some of the surfacing and some of the shortfall in um, in doing the sewer line.
With that being said, can a motion approve contract for Banner to move forward?
I'll make a motion.
Motion from Tyler, if you get a second. One second, second for Chaz. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Alright, thanks Weston for your work.
Thank you. Yeah, no, thank you. I wanna say thanks Trevor for, so last, last Tuesday, um I was, I was in Colton draft for a progress meeting and Trevor signed a proclamation to make August seventh PE day, so Professional Engineering Day. So Colton, Colton now recognizes Professional Engineering Day. So I, I appreciate recognition, yeah, on behalf of all the colleagues.
Yeah.
You know what, that um stake in right at the corner of Sixth and Main on the west side of the road? There's a stake, pink flag. And a pin.
Is it?
Yeah, cause I got one on the other end of the block.
Okay.
Same day.
So I was mowing around it and I was like, I wonder if this needs to be here? And then I seen the pin in, in the dirt and I was like, stake, stake back in.
Yeah, that's, so that's something that we're still kinda working through, but up at the ready mix plant, well, not really the ready mix. On Sixth and Charles, there's the culvert that goes under the street. And it ties into the storm sewer that's kind of runs parallel to the road. There's a big hole in the culvert and the road's kinda collapsed again on it. So we're trying to figure out what, what we need to do to fix that. There's two options, uh we can replace the culvert and it'll be like it is right now. A second option is we're doing some surveying to see if we can remove that culvert and put a valley gutter in right up against the road and just let the water run across the valley gutter instead of going into culvert and then over. And it, it appears that we might be able to get away with a valley gutter. So I'm kinda working on that a little bit, but. Valley gutter would be nice, clean it up. But yeah, so if you drive down that gravel road past the ready mix and you see a hole on the road, that's cause the culvert's broke. That's what that is. We're working on addressing that, I guess, that issue coming up.
And then, and if something like that would work to do a valley gutter, we will have concrete through town. It could potentially be something that they're able to do as well, if timing works out.
Sounds good.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Weston. Alright, we'll move on. Um Julie's gonna take off here at eight, so just because if we get, I'm gonna move all the way down to seven C. We're gonna pick, sign the president and vice president now that we have a full council. Riley left, she was currently our president. Um, and is that how your, to change? So instead of us making a motion and having an awkward silence, everyone's got a piece of paper in room.
Two pieces of paper.
Two pieces of paper, one's gonna be for president, so right now I'm gonna ask everybody to put their name that they want for a president on that piece of paper and then we'll take the top two and then we're gonna vote on the top two for president and then we're gonna do the same thing for vice president. Makes sense? So. Write them and then hand them to Michael. President?
Uh, just write a P or something under it and page it's for president.
I have to go. Don't wanna say anything. This is just for president right now. Got one for Matt Watanek for president, Matt Watanek for president, and one for Julie. And one for Julie. And got one for Julie. Okay, so there's our two nominations for president. For Matt Watanek and.
Got only five?
He don't have to nominate if you don't want.
Oh wait, we got one more here, and then Chaz Foster, there we go. So we're gonna take the top two, which is for Matt and Julie. Uh, we'll start off with Julie, if I can get a, all those for Julie, can you get an aye?
Aye.
Alright.
Got four, all those for Matt, can you get an aye? Okay, Julie, the new president.
Oh jeez. Does that mean I can't quit?
Hey, now we're gonna do vice president. Matt, three, Matt. Got Matt, Chaz. Matt. Okay, for all of those in favor of Matt for vice president, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, or not opposed, okay, all those for Chaz, say aye.
Aye.
Matt, did you hear something? Okay. There we go. Got that done. Okay, now we're gonna go on to our budget. So, this is just rough, still work in progress, nothing's getting done. There's no motion to move forward, so discussions.
Budget.
Budget, so if you guys are, I'm not gonna say we go through this to all tonight, because I want you guys to take it home.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Read through it. We'll, we'll set up a special meeting for budget, we'll do it during regular session time. Just some things, the, pretty much the only change that's gonna happen that we're looking at potentially is we gotta get the city hall roughed on, it's leaking, so that's gonna be one change. Another change is we are looking at not funding the development corporation anymore. And the city move on to purchase a land through the, with our CD, with a CD loan that we already have that CD, so we don't have to really change anything, the money is gonna be the same as if we were to budget for the development corp. Cause we would cash rent all the other stuff that we're not using, so there wouldn't be any difference. That's an item for discussion, doesn't mean that we have to do it, that's just a thought process. Just, another, another, the other thing was just, we can, if the city does that, then we can sell off any amount of the ground that we want to back to farm, farm ground. We don't wanna control all of that, you know what I mean? We can, so, we can, my thought was we purchase it, we secure the first few acres that we need to get this little phase done, we sell it back off, the remaining back off, but we put a first rate refusal on it, so if a farmer goes or we do come to them, we can come back and say, we're ready to purchase it again. That make sense?
Cause it, it, it secures our growth, I guess.
Yeah, and, and, and like I said before, the only thing I, I have a question on, and it'd have to, the legal would have to okay it, is whether or not that CD is general fund money or if that CD is water and sewer money. Cause if that CD is water and sewer money, we can't touch it.
No, we can't use that.
So we need to figure out what money is in that CD.
To, if it's a general fund.
Is it general fund, is it water sewer, is it a combination?
Yeah.
And if it.
How, how that spilt down.
Yeah.
And do budget wise.
Because I mean legally, we, we need to know if, if we can, if that's even a viable option.
Which I think it is, cause would we have Michaela to date with both accounts, or do we have about two little, two? Something about two million?
Quartering through all that sewer.
I don't know, I don't know what you guys are about, it's just food for thought. The development corp does have one sale on a lot right now. Um, we're working on the purchase agreement. This individual came to them right away, he wanted to secure, but sold, sold one lot for ninety, ninety-six thousand. We just got our work order for what it's gonna cost to put that first fifteen phases in. It's just a little over a million dollars to do that first phase, but we do have potential, another big project that's gonna be going in there too, so. Right now, I think I'm in focus just on the first fifteen lots.
That was the infrastructure you said was.
Just, uh.
Just over a million.
I can pull that up here, this, this is, this is a cost of opinion from the engineer.
Sure.
So, on the budget, you know, I've been talking about it just here and there to a few people. What are your guys' thoughts on creating like a separate equipment account and maybe a building maintenance account? Where we put money into those annually?
I think we have those budgeted already in there, don't we?
It's.
Then we have buildings.
Yeah, but you're talking.
There was a code in there for that, but there was nothing.
General government buildings.
Yeah.
Page, the second page.
But, but I'm talking, you know, where we can possibly.
Keep repairing maintenance right there.
Yeah, but how, how much was that? Was it really? I guess I didn't see that.
Yeah, repairs and maintenance budgeted for twenty-five, only used six hundred and thirty-two.
So maybe the roof was already budgeted for?
I think we did for one year, we did budget this.
Be, well.
Twenty-five.
There's puddles that'll be here on the floor. When it rains, above, below right there and in the back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Well, this, this is the twenty-four, this is just a rough draft of the budget. For.
We're in twenty.
You guys want the cost of what the, what Scott, or for the development for that first phase is one point one, seven hundred and seventy-five, alright.
Okay.
So is this one here, it's got twenty-four on it, that's this year's budget? And then this was for twenty-three?
Last year's.
Okay.
But it's, it's not complete, there are still things that need to be entered.
And what do we have in this year's budget for, for repairs and maintenance?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, total for buildings, we put away for a sign twenty-four thousand eight ninety-five, we've already used six, or seventeen thousand. No, that's the balance left.
Yeah, that's.
We've used six thousand nine hundred.
Yeah, we only had seven hundred and fifty dollars in there.
Yeah. You know, but, but, but what I'm talking is, is so we put this money aside, if we don't use it, it just keeps growing. That way in time, if we need a new building or something happens, we're not scrambling to replace like the, the east shed or the west shed if something happens catastrophic.
It says building improvements right here for seven thousand five hundred and we didn't use any of it.
But, but you, but you never see that money the following year, it, it isn't actually set aside and I'm talking.
Well, it might get reallocated.
It, it's, yeah, we have to balance the budget, right? So it has to get allocated to something.
No, but what Matt's saying is that.
I see what you mean.
At the end of the year, then we take that money and we actually physically move it into an account.
Yeah.
Instead of just letting it go dissolve back into the.
And then kind of.
We allocate those funds specifically to.
He's not saying everything, he's just saying specific items that we, if we did building improvements and we budget, let's just say it was making easy ten thousand dollars and we only use five thousand dollars, we don't let the five thousand dollars go back to the general fund, we actually take the five dollars and dollars and put it into account, so that keeps growing. You know what I mean, so over the, hopefully over that period of time, there is money that allocated that you just, it's a fund that you're always gonna keep. Bill, you're always gonna keep, it's feeding.
Yeah.
You're never gonna stop feeding it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, and then it's kinda the same thing with equipment, so we don't run into the same issue we ran into at each pickup. Where we're scrambling to find.
Essentially, essentially, you're never going to.
We talked about it, we said that's fine.
Well, yeah, but I mean, where are we getting the money from, where's this coming from?
It was just a matter of budget.
Yeah, but, but what I'm getting at is, you know, if we actually have an account set up.
I get, yeah, I get what.
Because if, if the payloader would go down tomorrow, we're not buying a new payloader for two hundred thousand dollars, we don't got the funds. We need to start setting money aside to start replacing some of these pieces of equipment. Is, is what I'm getting at and I just kinda want your guys' opinion if maybe I'm thinking crazy or.
Well, I mean, it's not crazy, but you don't just wanna put a bunch of money and just let it sit in your account unless you're not putting it into a CD or something. You know what I mean, why don't we set aside ten thousand dollars, throw it in a CD and know that, hey, let's let that ride for two years?
Yeah.
And then, and then we'll see, right, we'll see our return on it and then we can.
Maybe reinvest or.
Correct.
Yeah, and, and I, and I don't got a problem with that, but I, you know, I just think we need to start looking to where that account grows every year, so when we gotta buy a new mower, the money's there, we're not.
Well, we can do that by, by just setting a budget amount too, like we don't, we need something specific.
We're not taking it away from it.
Right.
Right.
We're always gonna spend that money, it's still our money. It's just not going back to the general fund, it's going to a specific account.
Yeah.
Which is just gonna be left in the budget the way that it is and allocated more to it, right?
Yeah, and then worst case scenario.
Which I would imagine that we're gonna have more to work with, with the large increase in property taxes that.
Possibly, yeah.
I just don't, my only concern is, I think it's a good idea, but my concern is that we don't get a bunch of, well, we are, this money's for, you know, future city equipment. This is for future, you know, I don't, we still have to run our budget.
Yeah.
But I like the idea, I mean allocating it, you know, not putting it back into general, I don't see a problem with that. But I just wanna see like all these little.
Run by Tobias and see what he thinks, might have to run by the auditor and see what that, he thinks on that too of. Cause now in theory, you'd be setting up a, another account in theory.
I don't think we'd be, I think it doesn't change in the budget unless we change it.
Yeah.
So if that money keeps being allocated, then it's just gonna continue to grow on there, you know what I mean?
I mean, you know, you, even if it's like the water and sewer fund where it's all, all one.
Well, this, I guess, ask, ask Tobias if there's another way, and so, you know, we got general fund, second penny, first penny, is there a way that we can set up an account or a funding in that?
And what we're doing is trimming, just so you know, cause there's, like I was.
Yeah.
So Tobias is, um, every time he comes, he's showing me, like the, pulls up the South Dakota accounting manual and we go through and we're looking and then he shows me like, well, we're moving this from your report and this from your accounts, cause it doesn't even exist. It wasn't there, it was just made up. So, the report is getting better, cause I spent a bunch of time on it today and I spent a bunch of time with him on Saturday. Um, we're going through and we're trimming. So, I'll ask him if there's a way that we can just keep adding to without having a special, I guess, account, because when it's already allocated, I, I guess, I don't understand.
I just ask him when it goes back, but I just don't, when it goes back to, we look at it five years from now in the general fund and then you just, it's, it's just hidden in the general fund, you know what I mean? I'd like to know like how much is actually sitting in that count, like how much have we actually?
Is, is actually allocated to.
You know what I'm saying, how much is, how much have we?
Yeah, but it will just look just like this, right? Cause it's a line item.
I understand that this is what we budgeted, is what we spent and then we have a balance. We don't.
At the end of the year, if you don't spend the money, it just goes back into the general fund.
Yeah.
Correct.
Kinda how it works.
Yeah.
But what you want, you want like a separate account that if you don't spend, if you got, say, two thousand dollars left over in streets, you put that two thousand dollars in this account.
Oh, I see what you're saying, like so this goes back to zero.
Twenty-five hundred left over, you take that twenty-five hundred.
We'll spend this, we'll spend this regardless, you know.
I, I thought this stayed there.
Yeah.
No.
I thought these numbers stayed.
It's a good idea, but it's a lot of.
That's why I'm saying we gotta ask the auditor.
Yeah.
Another company.
It's a good, cause I, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
But you know, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm more worried about it, when, when stuff does break, a, you know, a catastrophic, a fire, tornado, whatever, what are we gonna do with? And I, you know, I understand we got insurance on stuff.
It just looks, uh, I get to what you're saying, cause it might even down the road to a resident comes and looks at it and like, you guys just pulled fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund for that. Well, no, we've been building up for it for a hundred years, they don't know, you know, that it was out of there.
Yeah.
You know, it just looked like we took fifty thousand out of the general fund for it. So I get it, I get it on both ways, I just run by, run a bite to Tobias and just see what he thinks.
So what are, what are our needs that we need to look at in the next year, obviously the roof is one of them.
The roof's probably the biggest need.
I mean, we're getting hours on the payloader, right? I mean, do we need to start really, let's, I mean, two hundred thousand dollars could take us.
How many? No, I, I, I don't think it needs to be immediate, but.
I think we need to start planning for it.
Yeah, if, if, if you're already halfway through its life cycle. You know, I mean, it's coming, you know, I mean, we, you know, we need this kinda plan that there's gonna be a big expense replacing that. And we, you know, that's kinda why I was thinking we need to create an account, I mean, even like, like the mower we bought. You know, we split it up over three different things, but you know, if the money's sitting there and the mower goes down, we're like, okay, well, I guess we gotta get a new mower. You know, it's already there, it's already been allocated to replacing.
But there's no, uh, I don't think there's any other specific need that we need this year that's on the, since it's our data operation, I don't think there's.
We need to do anything with the east shop? You got that? Back to, okay.
I've got the one wall fixed, I mean, there's, there's, the building's got cracks in it everywhere.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's an eyesore, to be completely honest, I would love to see it go away, but we need to find a replacement.
Tried with the insurance company.
They said no.
Yeah, I'm like, hey, that guy, I'm pretty sure that went moon back at the ratio.
Should've left the door open and then let it pressurize and needed to blow the whole wall out. Um, so the west shop, is that, is that just, just in bad a shape?
No, west shop's not so bad, the building itself is in really good shape.
Could we facelift it?
The floor is, is, the concrete floor is all busted out and water kinda runs into the building more or less, but.
I was gonna ask you that, is there a reason you don't, you don't have concrete in there?
Well, there's concrete in there, it's just busted up, it's all busted up.
Really? It looks like a dirt floor.
Would you, would you utilize it more? If.
I would do that.
If we maybe put a little money into it, maybe give it a little facelift and do some concrete work in there or?
I don't know if we utilize it, utilize it more, more just for equipment storage and, you know.
Right, but if we were to invest some money into it and make it usable and just abandon that east shop altogether?
Well, that'd be the, if we could add on to it and make it bigger.
Correct, yeah.
Move all the tools and everything.
I'm just, I'm just.
No, no, I'm just gonna tell you, it's. The only nice thing about having that shop there is because I helped them grab that tractor out of there. Saying that that tractor mainly goes to that park and stuff like that, you're moving it further away and you're just having time. You know what I'm saying? Of running back and forth to that, if anything, I'd like to find a way to get closer to the damn park.
Well, can we put it underneath the bleachers? When we build something there to.
Have the room for that.
Park it underneath them bleachers and. Um, like I said, I'm just spitballing here. Just that east shop, that thing is an eyesore, I hate it.
It is.
I don't like it.
It just, I mean, in theory, most, I mean. Just a new shop would be nicer, that's all, I mean.
Yeah. I just said, you got more space on that west one to add on.
I still like the the new city hall right there, where I like, and put like a shop on the side of it.
Yeah.
That'd be like the ultimate.
It's like.
I know, I I talked to you about that too, and we tear that thing down and build a whole new city hall and small little city shop on the on the end there. Keep it all together and. But you're talking, you're talking probably two million dollars to do that.
We're getting out in the weeds here a little bit, aren't we?
Yeah, we are.
So what are we, what's our timeline for the roof? I mean, I see there's an estimate in here, but.
Do you have an estimate in here for kind of like thirty second cost to put some new rubber membrane up there to make flashing and stuff? You don't think there's really a timeline for it, I mean, it's just.
It would have to be updated because this this was from. Last winter.
Oh, cool.
But this also is from the company that, uh. Uh, employs, uh. The homeowner of the road out there by park.
Oh, okay.
This is, he works here? Oh, okay.
I don't know if you want me to get an updated number so we can make sure that we're not too far off. And then we wanna budget that for next year or do we wanna try to find a fund this year to do?
I think we need a budget for it next year.
Well, I might wanna, I might wanna ask Toby what the, uh. Cause didn't you say in the re- in the repair or something of buildings, there was like seventeen thousand left or something?
There's, yeah, there's seventeen thousand left, but that covers everything for the buildings, the salaries, the.
Specifically, we only had seven hundred and fifty dollars in there for repairs and maintenance, so technically, no, it'd have to be next year.
We're giving you our budget cycle, I should update the numbers, get a closer number.
Yeah.
And then we'll we'll budget for next.
You guys gonna, is that gonna last, huh?
Well.
Yeah.
The leaks and.
The winter is.
I mean, how many times, and that's what I'm thinking, the weight of winter and the melting and.
And that's where the big issue is, is when we get the melting, that's when we get a lot of that.
Yeah.
All the other issues too is the parapet wall.
The what?
The parapet wall, the the wall up front, that's been cracking and. Flaking off, so. But that's a masonry guy, so.
And some of that with the flashing will help take care of a lot of that.
Water leaking into the cracks is just gonna keep you.
When they put them solar panels on there, all they did is put them on a four by four and screw them. Like through the rubber roof.
Cool.
At all, and then it it doesn't help, the roof is, that liner is shot, like when you walk up there, if you're not careful, you step through. You gotta be really like cautious to how you move around up there. It's just brittle. It it definitely needs to be replaced.
So, question, do we have any? Bids on doing like patchwork and tones, I know, I know. I thought we budgeted a hundred and ten thousand.
For the roads or?
Hundred and five.
Yeah, we did budget that.
We were trying to get out, we were trying to balance the budget.
No, we haven't used any of it though, but.
So we're a hundred and ten thousand there?
One oh five, that we budgeted.
It's on the streets.
Yeah, page twelve. Out of second, it says second penny.
Use that anyway, can you? I don't see anything in streets here.
Keep, go to page twelve. Top right corner.
You're thinking about using that money for the roof.
Well. It says it's coming out a second penny, but I didn't think second penny had that much when we.
Are you in twenty two thousand three or?
Twenty four.
It's all the way in the back, I don't.
Yeah.
That's it's under the second penny fund, not not the.
Cause I don't remember what second penny can all be used for.
I thought we did too, I was just gonna ask that.
It just was under, it's under the wrong code, so if you look carefully, it's paid up under something else, but.
I can spend that tomorrow, I mean, I didn't realize the money was there, there's plenty of asphalt that couldn't be repaired in this town, so.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you could burn this hundred and five up real quick.
Right.
I can name off some right now, so.
I mean, you know, I I wasn't sure if, you know, I was like, you know, I haven't seen any work, but maybe something's in the works coming up still, you know? Okay.
I was under the understanding that we didn't budget any money for it, I wasn't gonna do any repairs this year.
Okay.
Uh, I would just say we. Wait anyways. So, I mean, we're not gonna get anything done before.
Can we use, so that hundred and five thousand, can we use some of that to fix whatever we're gonna do over there, that culvert that's broke in the street on Charles?
Oh, what's the stipulations behind a second penny?
Yeah, do you remember? I don't remember without looking it up.
Looked it, yeah, same, I'd have to look it up.
Cause I mean, it it it's listed under streets, RM. Yeah, RM, uh, in infrastructure, so I mean, I don't see why. It's, I mean, it's listed as repair maintenance. You know, and I don't know if the second penny was just, uh.
Well, I found a resolution here from two thousand twenty-two that says remaining balance of second penny fund to general fund. For generally use.
So if we budgeted it on a second penny, then it goes to general fund.
It was a resolution from two thousand twenty-two that.
I think that.
Literally.
I think that's when, I think that's when you, when you guys paid off that loan and you could take second penny and move it to general fund. The remainder. I think that's what that was probably for, cause I think that was.
Doesn't even have an amount or anything.
Yeah.
Boy, that was that, we paid off that eighty, eighty eighty thousand dollar loan. We had a hundred or five hundred and eighty into second penny. Paid off that eighty thousand dollar loan. For infrastructure or utilities, can't remember which one it was now. And we were able to move that remaining five hundred into the general fund.
You know, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, if 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 we're not gonna use some of the roads, maybe we could get the rough fixed up this year.
No, I know, I said.
Before winter hits, is, you know, and then save it for next year and. Maybe budget a little more and maybe better communication on on our part with you on.
So, but can you move money from that? If it's budgeted for street repairs, can you pull that money out of there and use it for something else?
I don't think so.
The only way you can do is you have to ask for allocation of more more money. I don't think we can move it from.
You can't move it.
From it, I don't think. Budgeted amount. It's gonna up. Slippery slope of. Budgeting for one thing and then you do the other. So.
But if we're not gonna use that this year, we can, we can definitely get a roof for next year, uh, you know, we can rebudget it.
And like I said, it's, they can do that rough in the middle of winter, it's not the end of the world for them to do it. It's not like it has to be before winter comes. Yes, I mean, I think we need to do something on it, but. I think, I think we need to get our budget done so. Allocate it correctly.
Yeah, I agree.
What's the culvert gonna cost? Any idea? No? Okay.
I don't, my goal is not to have the culvert there.
Okay.
So I wanna, I wanna remove the culvert and and train, change the drainage a little bit and have the drainage run over to the road and into a valley gutter.
Okay.
Is what I'd like to see there.
That's going east and west, right?
Yeah.
On the north side of the road.
Follow six street, right on the north side of six street there, shoot across east and west. So like that, look at that hole where that drainage is right there, fill that in and bring that up and then shoot the water back towards the road and then across.
To the, to the north? You know, it'll flow to the north?
No, it'll flow to the east, right into that big box, that drainage box.
Oh, oh, okay, where you, okay, the one you already have to. Clean out all the time, cause. There's really no way around that, we really don't wanna do anything else, you'd have to pour concrete all over there in order to.
But keep getting filled up.
Yeah. And there's really no way around that.
But.
Would so you, would you, you'd run a concrete?
Yeah, probably like a six foot wide.
With just a little dip to it, just enough for the water to flow. Okay. That shouldn't be too much.
The gradient. Cause we gotta fill in that hole, and we gotta dig up that culvert cap it. Remove it out of the roadway, stuff like that. I mean, it shouldn't be like a huge deal.
Thick concrete.
Okay, back to the roof, it's just. The snow, if somebody can go through, somebody's foot can go through now.
So, I mean, if we can find the dollars to do it this year, we way better to do it.
Yeah. We gotta figure out.
Yeah, I just, I just also don't wanna see anybody going through it.
And I also want to say that, um. We're working towards the budget, but, um, Toby is down as public work superintendent, so he's having to do some of that work. So. Uh, he said that it might be September before we look to approve our budget.
But if we can see, try to come out of. Our previous budget to move forward.
Right, I'm just for warning.
Maybe before we do anything, you know, updated number.
Maybe let's put it on the agenda for next month, let's try and get updated numbers. See if there's any way we can put money out of the general account or.
You know.
Ask Tobias about reallocating money, I mean, I don't wanna start doing.
Yeah, I got an email on here.
I just, I don't wanna us to start doing that. Right, budgeting for one thing and then, oh, we didn't use it.
Yeah.
The only time we really ever done it that I know of is like, oh, that major street repairs.
Yeah.
From like.
Well, we just asked for more money, though. We didn't have enough budget this year, so.
We got seventy-five hundred.
It's still in the same item, we just asked for more.
Building improvements. Let's send that.
And then as far as the the hundred and five, do you wanna try and do any street repairs this year or you?
Have we addressed anything on like gravel road, by by mild Jensen's and all them? We talked about getting ready my stick greater up there and scraping.
I went up there and kind of moved some stuff around.
Uh, my only thing is, I just think the same. And see what what we we done. I mean, I don't know if we can piggyback on anything for asphalt weather up here, I mean, that's something maybe you could ask. Make it cheaper, cause then we don't have a mobilization, but I mean.
You still got removals and all that, that's where the kitchen.
I just don't, I just don't wanna say, oh, since we got the money, let's spend it. Let's wait to see. What happens after construction.
And I'll talk with Weston and see if we can kind of get some numbers on that over there by the way, see what we're doing, that's gonna cost us.
The only other thing I could say is if you see one that's. Gonna be a hazard. Let's address it that way, but.
I don't see that, I mean, there's, there's a lot of roads that are broken up that need to be replaced.
Well, honestly, a lot of it was up on. Get addressed anyways, but that's, that's why I'm kind of saying, let's just see what. Happens after we're all done, if all the trucks are out. Done.
Okay.
See what we have. Okay, um, so yeah, just take the budget home, read through it. But items that you guys think should be budgeted, shouldn't be budgeted.
I just wanna share a quick on the online utility payment option, um. Got a long date at the end of the month, but. Not for sure, so that's that's the goal anyways, so I haven't announced any date or anything because they're working on the. Uh, they're putting it together right now. Before it's put on our page, so there's no documents or anything for it. We're meeting about once a week to talk about it, so. Julie, do you have anything for you gotta go?
No, I just found, I was. I found the ambulance, it was four four six oh, and then I was just looking for that one thing and, yeah, but no, I'd like, we'll just, I'll go through it and. Make notes.
Like the fire stuff is all gonna get changed over.
Anything from you having anything?
I'm here to observe, keeping my mouth shut, my first time back, I gotta easy back into me.
Um, Julia, have you got anything as far as the pool and meeting?
We're going to.
Uh, we're trying to look at a meeting maybe Thursday.
Yeah, Thursday, but could you do a quick Zoom meeting?
Yeah, whatever works.
Yep.
You guys, just let me know, we'll figure something out.
This is about one company.
Yeah, um, Nater.
Yeah.
And then I'll print out the other ones that I got, and then you talk to some, you talk to somebody else. Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's what. Yeah. Okay.
Well, and since, um, we're gonna continue our busing, maybe since it's budget time, we potentially ask. Other cities.
To join in on the bus.
To join in on.
It comes down to. To writers, so here's my bill. This is the hard part, and we've been noticing it, so, you know. Yes, we've been offering it to Crocs and Crocs, this part of our district. But we're only getting a couple kids from Crocs.
On the bus?
On the bus. Majority of the bus riders are Baltic.
Crocs just not mean.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know, and honestly, the only one that that I know of, cause it got brought to my attention on, I don't know exactly. Is my sister-in-law Heidi.
Yeah.
Cause Brooks was the only one riding it. So the bus driver was kind of being grawly the couple times of. Driving all the way back to Crocs for one, one child. Which. It is what it is, it's budgeted and it's got for it, for it, but. Might have to do another survey in Crocs and say, hey. You guys wanna use us, it's kind of a waste of money.
But I mean, on the same aspect, they paid for it, well.
You know what I'm saying, but you know, that's where I'm just. Do we open it up to another?
Community.
Community that.
How many kids were on the bus too?
Well, we had a full, full roster, I mean, everybody signed up, I think we're averaging probably fifteen. Kids a day, fifteen, twenty kids a day on the bus.
You think it was because Crocs paid for it? Or or a business paid for the kids for the bus ride?
I don't think it had anything to do with that, no, I'm talking about Heidi, I was asking, I'm like, oh, I wasn't thinking, I'm like, he had baseball, you know, if he has baseball, he doesn't get on it. I don't know if that's. The link with it, but.
I'll have to talk to my brother.
Just ask around.
Yeah, figure out why his kids weren't using it because.
I'm not saying that thing.
I, I know they had a pass.
Yeah, they had a pass and they were on it a couple of times, but it seems to always kind of. Oh, wow, and then this year, you can't go off this, this summer was just not here for the pool, so it just. We had like, what? Four weeks of actual pool. But. I don't know. Baltic seems to be really utilizing it and.
I say Chester. I I know I talked about it earlier.
Last year and I asked him to get a a number of kids that would actually be potentially using it.
I can I can push him. I'll get I'll get him to do it.
Yeah. Because I know Chester would be another one. I mean.
I already I already know of at least five kids from Chester that would be on right away. I just don't know what other pool do we ask besides Chester?
Can't go to. Go in the top because if you're gonna go to Crooks and Baltic, you have to have a second bus to go to Chester.
That's just it.
Right, you're looking at forty five minute bus ride to an hour.
Yeah.
Start a little bit earlier too.
Really expensive. The only other thing is we can help. Maybe Chester would be like, hey. You guys got your bus system? Talk to your bus system about bringing it down because now your bus goes there and back.
Yep.
True. You know, versus. Ours goes there.
Well. I'll talk to Brett about this.
But I don't know what other community we open it. Hartford's got their own pool. Delaware's got their own pool.
Wilbur Ellis is pretty good in sponsoring a lot of stuff, so. There may be something to where he could work out a deal with them to where they may help. With their own bus service.
Yeah.
Too, you know what I mean? They have their own.
Just open it up and.
Yeah.
And I don't know. I mean, do we keep it at three days a week too? I don't know. That's what we're doing it right now, three days a week.
You know, see if the days are the problem.
Yeah, that's I mean, I mean, I think.
Maybe maybe we are just hitting.
Re-survey it.
Activities and right on that day.
And the age group that you're targeting are is baseball-heavy kids, you know what I mean?
And the thing is, that's the hard part too, because I've had a couple of families like, oh, my child's not old enough to. You know, not quite eight, but our pool rules is it's eight and.
They need to be accompanied by.
And honestly, we don't need a five-year-old up here for three hours unattended.
Not with their twelve-year-old brother. This, you know, the twelve-year-old brother sister.
They've been using their pool, not just you on the bus. I mean, they've been coming up and moving it, so that's been great, good. Open it up to everybody. People will use. So, no. Um.
I gotta. I gotta head out.
Okay, see you, Julie. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Congratulations on your new position.
Okay, um. So I I found nineteen thousand dollars. And then the budget is not hasn't been used.
Rock, like I said, first one.
Yeah, we need to see what it's gonna cost. Hopefully it doesn't cost much more than what it was from last year.
Well, it said said in their thing that, you know, they could only take them three days and it said they could. Be within two weeks and.
Right.
That was bad points or whatever, so.
Our so our budget obviously resets on the first, right? Correct? Calendar year, the first, so if it's something that could hold out till the first. Get our new budget amount and have them have it ready to go and set up so that they come. That first week of January too, if that's if we want to wait. If they're willing to do it, I don't know what their practice is. They do it or.
You just keep the product warm.
I think you're gonna get better. Better quality if it's. Warm outside.
Right. Couple of different ways of skinning that cat.
Is there any way you can pitch that, tune it?
Where'd the wa- where would the water go?
We'd have to push it back out of the parapet wall. You get it up higher. I don't know what I have to jump up there and see what how what even.
I don't think you'd want to.
Well, you wouldn't be able to do like an egg steal if you would have an exposed, you'd have to do a standing seam rub, so.
I mean, if you pitched it, it'd be better off doing shingle.
Yeah, but if it's only.
But yeah.
Two, twelve in there, you can't do it, so. Which I'm guessing is probably what it will be. So, okay. Uh, we'll move on. You guys can see the year to sale budget or the remember slash sales. Thirteen thousand. So that's quite the benchmark we were hoping for this year, but like I said. It was a rough year. It was a rough year. The weather did cooperate.
It was quite a few days of that.
No, most of June, I don't think you hardly got any. Anything. It kind of rained every other day and then it was cold.
Right now, it's supposed to be hot.
Right, and and now here we are this last week.
We've always had people. Why don't you guys keep the pool open after?
Barely hit seventy degrees. Yeah, it was hotter.
Yeah, I mean, last year we were having people, why don't we have the pool open after school's out? Our staff's gone, so.
Right, yeah, there's so much to run up. So. Oh, well, what's next year?
Yeah, I think it was. It was a good year.
It was still a good year.
I kids had fun. Yeah, we did. I mean, we did. We had a few more things. We did the little kids go in the dark party. Well, the little one did pretty good. We did a movie night. Movie night started off good, but then it got cold fast, so. Kids got out of the pool. Yeah, but the 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 annual, now the second annual team go one, which I think. Wasn't any issues with that. That went over pretty smooth, so. Okay, moving on, sheriff's report. See that? Questions on that? Um, Kayla gave us the update on the utility payment launch in a few weeks.
And so is that? Did they have? Did they have a date on that? Sorry, I wasn't listening.
It's at the end of August, but. Till we get closer, I don't want to.
Right, it's a soft launch. I'm sure they're gonna.
It's supposed to be the official launch, but I mean, I haven't seen. Much yet. I haven't seen the actual page yet. They were still building it, so I'll meet with them again tomorrow for a progress update, so. That's as much as I want to say right now. I don't want to give any hard dates in case, you know, it doesn't come to fruition.
Fair enough.
Uh, moving on, poets, city hall. It's gonna get an update on that.
We'll just put that back on the agenda for next month. Could I get a number on that, baby?
Yep, oh, we got a thing up too. Wow, no, it'll be fine. It's a little green, but never mind. I'm talking. I was just thinking if we had that project on that, but it'd be far ahead of that, so. Um, okay, moving on. Through the agenda in minutes from July fifteenth. Any issues or concerns?
Yeah, uh, fostering their twice, uh, number one.
You know, I feel like I look at that section extra close just to make sure, and then it's always there's something there. I don't know what it is. Or it's just because I it's like, yep, that name should be there, so I don't even.
Just admit it, you miss me. Yeah.
I haven't heard enough from you for the planning and zoning stuff, so I just had to put it out there.
Any concerns or changes need to be made?
Just that one.
I'll make a motion to approve both the. Uh, agenda in minutes. All those who favor say aye. Okay, review of August claims.
I guess I didn't see anything wrong with it when I looked over this weekend, so. I'll make a motion to approve unless somebody else has a.
One second.
Did you guys like the change of just using the last name?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's simple.
A little bit cleaner.
Yep. One hundred thanks to the Lions Committee for giving us that money to the pool. We used it towards the chairs.
I know one time you guys talked about making a walk path to the south side of the ball field. Are that's.
That's gonna be a pretty big, that's that's gonna be a pretty big one. We've always been. We hit game fishing parks up every single year on that one.
It's a sidewalk.
Yeah, sidewalk.
Trail, it's like a trail.
Trying to do a walk.
I know we talked at their last meeting to ask whether it's there with anything else, and I said.
It would be nice to just to have kind of somewhat of a walking bed, but that's one we're just cut. We keep hitting game fishing parks up and it's pretty much the same application, just change a few words in there, but.
Does uh, the DOT have a grant for bike paths or walkways?
I don't know.
Because. Because I'm pretty sure that bike path by Hartford to be granted there on state highways. But I believe that one in Crooks too has also been funded by the DOT.
DOT and game fishing parks and all the one in Crooks.
Probably, yeah, probably both.
The one, the reason that we don't always get it with the game fishing parks one is because it's not necessarily fulfilling. Like. In the community, like it's not.
There's not enough coverage.
Yeah. But maybe one of these days it'll click.
Found out they don't like this the walking path so close to the to the road. It's called a sidewalk. They don't find sidewalks, so better try and rework that or rework it.
Except for Eagle and the Crooks and it's connected to the road.
Two feet from the end of the asphalt to where the walking.
Right next to the highway.
Yeah.
Um, question, quarter, there's one porta potty left in the park. Do we need to keep that a little longer? You want to hear?
Unless we open up a. Pool hall, our pool bath signed ones. Will it be known? I don't know yet.
I'd say we should keep it, I mean, for. For the campers, maybe.
I'm just, it's a good spot. It's more by the campers right now, but.
I know we currently have campers.
We're paying for it, so we'll keep it as long as you guys want.
Yeah, because otherwise we're gonna keep that one in the. Who else will turn it around?
I don't, I don't need to run the risk of paying dollars.
Didn't we need to just talk about the money from the sponsorship yet? On what we want to do there?
Do need to, yes.
Yeah.
I we if we're gonna try and figure out what to do, that we should probably talk about.
Or at least budget for it, or. Or I don't even know how we budget for that sponsorship money.
I we can't really.
Not even a city item.
It's not. It's money we just need to spend on specific park improvements.
Well, one thing we're waiting to is on that too, is waiting here back from Sioux Valley Energy about that expansion on the pool deck.
Okay.
Yeah, so there might be a shortfall.
What was their?
But that's not until.
Take what was their involvement with that?
So we asked our Sioux Valley Energy for ten thousand dollars to extend that pool deck.
Okay.
To the to the north.
Yep.
Because now we're, we were having all those other communities come in, so it's just to have more room in the pool for the kids to walk around.
Isn't that gonna be a one?
Yeah, but I mean, but. If we do, there might be a shortfall because we asked for the the max of ten thousand and they might only give us four thousand or five thousand. We're not, it's not at all.
Here, if they've got left to work funds, sponsorship, let's buy a couple.
I think there's a bunch in there.
Not necessarily.
They're on fourteen, fifteen hundred bucks a piece.
Because the sponsorships are self-paying for the lights.
Okay.
So.
I think we need to maybe just dive in at some point, maybe just have it on the agenda for next month, how much we got left.
You can mean you can go through that. Itemize all that out, what what we bought this year for. I mean, there's some stuff that fell in the sponsorship of M D five. Which is with the pool.
And then if we want to do the that expansion, depending on how much.
We, I want to take like those umbrellas that we bought.
Yeah.
Out of that, out of the sponsorship, not the city money. You know what I'm saying?
Because if there's a shortfall of funds to do it. Uh, after we use what's left of the sponsorship money and if Sioux Valley only gives us a couple thousand, whatever the case may be, the. Money that the pool committee.
Yeah.
Fundraiser, if we need to use some of that specifically for that deck, we could take out of that money. To finish it and then the rest of it put in a C D.
But also too, if we have this new pool liner, if that's our next go around too, I'd like to save that money. To use that money.
Right. Well, yeah, I would rather do the liner than the.
Because that's something that all all the way, but that cracking and all that in the pool needs to be invested. Before someone cuts their foot on it or whatever, so. There's a lot of stuff and iron.
There is.
Um, if you want to put something out tonight, just to let everybody know about water restrictions, eight eight P M to ten P M tomorrow night.
Oh, they want to go like the ten, eight to ten now?
No, ten to eleven.
Weston said.
Ten down on my eleven.
I know, but if they're testing at ten o'clock, so you want your restriction to start before that, otherwise you.
Got you. I see what you're saying, yeah.
Say eight to eleven or whatever, yeah, just I would say eight to eleven.
Okay, all right, well, put that.
And then I'll put a text message out.
I'm gonna make sure I shower for three hours.
You would.
I'm gonna go over to his house and use it too.
Separately, I have a separate shower.
And then word it, it's it's everybody east of Main Avenue. So like you, it doesn't affect you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What are you cooking up for supper?
Yeah, they're they're feasting.
You can do that. For like a day, for like a day or two, would it be? An official to clear the. The marquee or the message board out there? So I know right now like there's a lot rolling through it. Just just to get this information out, just turn that other stuff off for the time being. And then get that out, or is that a pain? I I don't know.
I that's.
I accidentally logged out of the Gmail account, which, yeah.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we can make.
I'll second.
We're getting off topic. Motion to adjourn, second.
All those who favor say aye.
You know that.
Who was that person?
Tyler.